Good morning. This is Blue Earth County Board Meeting, our second meeting of the year. First, I'd like to ask everybody who can to rise for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the agenda review. Bob, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda. You've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Agenda is approved as presented. Item number one is DNR land acquisition. Administrator Bob Meyer, would you like to open that up for us?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have had a request from the DNR to consider a resolution here today, so I would invite Mr. Stein-Inver.
Inver.
He's here today. He can maybe join us and present some more information.
All right, and you're welcome to use the podium or sit up here at the front, whatever you're most comfortable with.
Sure, I'll use the podium if you don't mind.
And again, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Stein-Inver, and I'm the area wildlife supervisor for the Minnesota DNR. My office is in Niklet, 501 Ninth Street in Niklet, Minnesota. And thank you first of all for putting me first on your agenda. It looks like you got a busy day, so I appreciate that. And I'll be brief. Today, we're talking about a donation of property that is passing through from the Massif Family Trust to the Pheasants Forever, and then Pheasants Forever is recouping their costs by a bargain sale to the DNR, if that makes sense. The land is directly adjacent to our George and Elizabeth Lang Wildlife Management Area, and the Massif family approached us and said that they felt this land would be better off in natural habitat and wildlife than being farmed, and so they wanted to make a donation. They had a very short window for closing, and state agency, we can't, we can't move as fast as we'd like to sometimes, and so we asked Pheasants Forever to step in and handle the closing using their procedures, and they were able to get it done in that timeline. All Pheasants Forever asked is that we make them whole for their closing costs, which the family asked us to cover, and the land survey, which was completed. And that's why we're here now. We have to do this resolution for county board approval using those funds. So it's a bargain sale, but the billed payments will be based on the assessed value, not the purchase price.
Do you have any questions, clarifying questions from the board on this area in Sections 12 and 13 of Sterling Township?
Nope. We've, yeah, we've seen these before, and it's very exciting, and thank you very much for the family making that donation. This is a very nice piece to have as part of that.
It fits in really well with our objective of building complexes where we already own land and to, in my own personal desires as a habitat manager, to diversify from prairie management only to some of these, these different habitat type potentials. And here we'll be doing direct seeding of river bottom hardwoods because it just makes sense to plant trees instead of fight them, and so that's where we're going.
Very nice.
We have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
We've got a motion already. Is that a second? A second discussion? Any questions? Are we ready to vote on the resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The resolution is approved as presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will be holding a dedication ceremony, and I'll let the board know when we plan that. Perhaps somebody would like to attend as well, when we put the sign up and name it after the family, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our drainage. We have five drainage actions. I'd ask Mr. Craig Ostenson to come forward. The first thing we have is the acceptance hearing for County Ditch 12. I would ask we start with an agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes today.
Okay, if there's no changes in the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Agenda is approved as presented. Today's purpose of the hearing is to receive comments from all parties interested in the repairs to County Ditch 12. Order of business for this hearing is the following. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer, and then we will open the hearing for public comments. I'll ask Blue Earth County Drainage Staff Craig Ostenson to review the jurisdictional documents first.
Okay. Hearing notice was mailed on January 10th, 2024. Published, it was published in the Mankato Free Press also on January 10th, 2024. Notices were also posted outside the Blue Earth County Board Meeting Facilities. As far as the background, Blue Earth County Ditch 12 is in Mankato Township. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a system repair on January 24th, 2023. The project was awarded to Borneke Construction, Inc. The Property and Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition repair. All contractual works has been completed by the contractor. The purpose, the purpose of an acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor's completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the findings and orders approving the engineer's acceptance report on County Ditch 12 repair work and release any final payments due to the contractor for the project.
Thank you, Craig. We've heard the jurisdictional documents, the notices, as well as the memo. At this point, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those favor the motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. They are accepted. I'll now ask Mr. Chuck Brandl of ISG to review the engineer's report. Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning. I've got a short presentation. So this is the third phase of County Ditch 12, and this portion was petitioned. County Ditch 12 is approximately 1,500 acres on the east side of the city of Mankato. There have been portions of this ditch that have been taken over by the city. The area highlighted in pink is the area that we're working on. It's, it's the last phase. So we, we cleaned the, the westerly part, then we did the middle part, and then this end phase had some issues with a wetland and a DNR permit. Landowners petitioned to move forward with that portion of the cleaning. A DNR permit was obtained. Structure height was set and determined with the DNR. For an outlet structure, that structure was constructed, the ditch was cleaned, and there were trees removed. Along with that, a portion of the wetland was just cleared for vegetation, which the Wilmises were the petitioners, and they had concerns about flow coming out of this wetland into the ditch. I believe most of that has been taken care of. The project was bid in May of last year. Borneke Construction was a little bitter. They were there July and August. The project went fairly smoothly, fairly quickly, and now we're here at the, the final acceptance hearing. Here are a few pictures. Ditch cleaning, tree clearing, and then a steel sheet pile structure, which maintains the elevation of the wetland at the ordinary high water elevation, but it also allows for a spot that the system can be cleaned to, because this, at the, at the time of construction, this was just dirt that had built up, and it was building up, and debris was getting on it. So this allows the ditch to function, but it also protects the wetland. Along with the permit, we did get a $50,000 CPL grant through the DNR to help pay for the structure to protect the, the wetland basin, and that'll be put towards the project. Borneke did sign their final pay estimate. Their awarded quote was 75,000. Construction costs were just over 71,000, and they're currently owed 33,73. Again, we have that DNR CPL grant, which covers most of the construction of the, of the weir and the riprap around the weir. There were some damages. Trees were removed on the Wagnes property, and then there was some damage to the field on the Wilmas property, which was in beans at the time. Those damages have been documented, and we recommend some payment for those damages to the landowner. So it's our opinion that everything has been constructed satisfactory. They've completed the contract. We've received all the contract documents, and we recommend approving the final work pending any comments from landowners. Thank you.
Okay, you've heard the engineer's report. Are there any clarifying questions from the Drainage Authority on the report? Seeing done, and at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment at this time on County Ditch 12? Please come to the podium and, and state your name and your address for the record. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Jeff Schmidt. I'm Box 545, Mankato. I have the land just to the south of the, where the structure is, on the other side of the gravel road, and we have kind of a wetland area there with ponds. Just want to let you know that we would, if you, as things progress, we would be willing to possibly take water to keep the ponds full, you know, rather than have them drained out for wildlife or whatever. It's kind of backwards of whatever's going on, but I see it. There's a lot of apartments and everything going in. There's going to be a lot of water going into that pond. We would maybe be interested in visiting with somebody about that in the future if need be.
We could make that happen. Certainly anytime we can do some water storage and things like that and improve wildlife habitat as part of a drainage system is something we always want to look at.
Yeah, you might reach out to us then, yeah.
That's noted. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make comments on County Ditch 12 at this time? I'll ask for a third and a final time. Is there anyone else wishing to make a comment on County Ditch 12 repair? Seeing no further comments, I'll close the comment portion of this hearing and ask, are there further questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
No.
I would move approval.
Okay, we've got a motion to move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second discussion.
Well, seeing that this is the only ditch in my district, it's nice to see it being improved and fixed up, and wetlands are also always very important to us in Blue Earth County, and we approve, we really appreciate the, the work done to, to keep them going. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a motion and a second to accept the findings in order, and that engineer's acceptance report and contract for petition work for portions of County 12 be accepted. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. We now will adjourn. This concludes the County Ditch 12 public hearing. Next on our agenda is the County Ditch 89 public hearing for the acceptance hearing. We'll do an agenda review on that. Please, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, seeing no changes, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second? A motion and a second discussion on that. It looks good to you. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved as presented. Purpose of the hearing is to receive comments from all parties interested in the repairs to County Ditch 89. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We'll hear from the appointed engineer, and then we'll open it for public comments. At this time, Craig, it'd be appropriate for you to review the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. The hearing notice was mailed on January 10th, 2024. It was published in the Mankato Free Press on January 10th, 2024. Notices were also posted outside the Blue Earth County Board Meeting Facilities. As far as the background here, Blue Earth County Ditch 89 is in Pleasant, Mount, and Shelby Townships. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a system repair on November 2nd, 2021. The project was awarded to Borneke Construction, Inc. The Property and Environmental Resources Department staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractor. The purpose, the purpose of the acceptance hearing is to determine if the contractor's completed the work in accordance with the plans and specifications. When a drainage authority accepts a contract, it will order the payment of the remaining balance due on the contract. Today, we are asking the Drainage Authority to accept the final, accept the draft findings and order approving the engineer's acceptance report for County Ditch 89 repair project and release any of the final payments due to the contractor for this project.
Thank you, Craig. We've heard the jurisdictional documents and the memo. I would ask for a motion to accept those documents into the legal record.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion's carried. They are accepted. I'll ask Chuck Brandl of ISG to review the engineer's report.
All right. Good morning again. I'm Chuck Brandl with ISG. So little different project than what we just talked about, County Ditch 89. We had a bridge failure. Here's the picture of the bridge, which left us with a landlocked piece of property, and that bridge was part of the drainage system. And we looked at different options, if we could get an easement versus constructing a bridge. The easement was not able to be obtained, which would have saved dollars. We had obviously the public hearings, and, and we constructed the bridge because we had no option, because we needed to supply this property with access. This area drains all over nine, or over 9,000 acres, which is why we needed a large structure. So we ended up with an eight-by-six box culvert. We bid different options, if we could cast it in place versus precast. Precast was the most cost-effective. Borneke Construction was a little bitter back in March of 2022. They did all of the construction in October of 2022, except for some seeding. The seeding got done fairly late, and we waited this year to make sure that the seeding was established. This is why we're closing it now instead of last year. So we're waiting for the seed to establish. That's all been established. Everything is good to go. Here's a plan of the project, the plan and profile. We did note that the ditch will probably need to be cleaned upstream and downstream of the structure at some point when we, when we did the survey of the, the area. Here are a few pictures of construction, taking out the bridge, clearing out the bottom, the aerial of the crane. They, they did a very nice job. Everything was set well. This is a tough structure to set, but everything went, went well. Landowners cooperated with us. The contractor did sign all of their construction documents. We got all of the necessary documentation, including IC-134s. Again, our estimate was 180,000. The awarded bid was 208. We did use a little extra riprap, which is why we're at 215. The contractor's been paid just over 204,000, and they're currently owed 10,756 and 55 cents. We did have some damages. We had to drive through a few fields to get to this area because of the, it was landlocked, and we're recommending payment of, of the damages shown, and those have been tabulated for each landowner. Most of it was non-crop because they waited till the crops were out and then did the construction, so that worked out fairly well for those landowners. It's our recommendation that the project is, has been built satisfactory and is, is in compliance with the contract, and we recommend accepting the work. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any clarifying questions on the engineer's report from the board members? Okay, thank you, Chuck, for that report. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. Again, the county administrator will give us a one-minute warning and let us know when we've used up the allotted five minutes. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments at this time during the public hearing? Anyone wishing to make comments? I will ask for a third and final time. Is there anyone wishing to make comments for County Ditch 89? Hearing no further comments. I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there's any further questions or comments from the board.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Nothing.
Okay, hearing done. I entertain a motion and a second to accept the drafted findings in order and approving the engineer's acceptance report and order any final payment be issued to the contractor and crop damages.
Move the proof.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. We've accepted the findings in order as such in order that the engineer's acceptance report and contract for the petition work for the portions of County Ditch 89 hereby be accepted. There's no other items on the agenda, so this concludes the County Ditch 89 hearing. Next on our agenda is County Ditch 51. Craig, please.
Okay, purpose. The Blue Earth County Ditch 51 watershed is approximately 464 acres in size and located in Suresco Township. We are in the process of completing redetermination of benefits for all public ditches in Blue Earth County. Due to the extremely old, original benefits listed for this public drainage system, a redetermination of benefits is necessary to bring the currently out-of-date benefits and damages listing up to current values. Action requested at today's meeting, we ask the Drainage Authority to appoint viewers to redetermine benefits and damages to County Ditch 51.
Okay, you've heard the requested action. What is the wishes of the board?
Move the proof.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Ready to vote on the, the motion to approve, appoint the viewers for the ROB for CD 51? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Those viewers are appointed. Next, we have County Ditch 91.
Okay, purpose. The Blue Earth County Ditch 91 watershed is approximately 615 acres in size and located in Sterling Township. We are in the process of completing redetermination of benefits for all public ditches in Blue Earth County. Due to the extreme old, original benefits listing for the public drainage system, a redetermination of benefits is necessary to bring the currently out-of-date benefits and damages listing up to current values. Action requested at today's meeting, we ask the Drainage Authority to appoint viewers to redetermine benefits and damages for County Ditch 91.
Okay, we've heard the County Ditch 91 memo and action requested. What is your pleasure?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve the motion to appoint the viewers for the redetermination of benefits and damages. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, though we will appoint those viewers. Next we have, and not last but not least, or least but not last, 78.
Purpose. An illegal outlet into County Ditch 78 has been identified and recorded by the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff on November 21st, 2023. A discussion about establishing an outlet for additional unbenefited lands occurred with a private tile contractor and the landowner's son on behalf of the owner, property's owner. During the discussion, it was explained a petition to outlet must be made to comply with drainage law. No petition for outlet has been received by the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff. As a result, the Drainage Authority must notify the property owner and direct them to block the outlet or otherwise make the outlet ineffective. The providing, provided findings in order shall serve as a formal notice of violation to the landowner as required by Minnesota Statute 103 E.401 subdivision seven and eight for unauthorized usage of County Ditch 78 outlet. Action requested ta, today, we are requesting the Drainage Authority approve the drafted findings in order so that it may serve as a violation notice to the landowner.
Okay, you've heard the memo and the action. What is your pleasure? Entertain a motion to accept the drafted findings in order.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The drafted findings in order is approved. And that ends today's ditches.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. Chuck, you want, yeah, you want to make sure you get their information, Chuck? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Next on the agenda, item number seven is planning and zoning. Morning, Scott and George.
Morning.
Good morning.
We don't have a TV screen to see what's on YouTube, so I'm not sure if your names and titles are on, on the record, but I'd ask for introduction for the record for those that are viewing.
Yeah, Scott Salisbury, land use planner, property environmental resources.
George Leary, Blue Earth County Planner and Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Go ahead.
PC 01-24 is a request from Dallas and Danielle Kennigs. It is a request for review and approval of an interim use permit to operate an equipment repair business as a Level 2 home occupation. The property is owned agricultural and is in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 26, Beaufort Township. The site address is 59126 137th Street, Mapleton, Minnesota. At the planning commission staff presented the report. The applicant was present. There was no comment from the public. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff, including the applicant's request for extended hours of 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, and additional hours in emergency situations. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. We will, this will be a public hearing. A public comment will be allowed in just a minute. I also want to remind us for a third time, comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. At this time, if there's no clarifying questions from the board members, I will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 01-24, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'll ask, is there anyone wishing to speak on PC 01-24? Anyone wishing to speak on this PC 01-24? Now, I'll ask for the third and final time. Now I'll ask for the third and final time, is there anyone wishing to come to the podium to speak on PC 01-24? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment portion and ask if there's any clarifying questions or comments from the board.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
This time, it would be appropriate for a motion to approve?
I would make, I would recommend approval based on the planning commission's recommendation.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion.
Well, number one, I'm always happy when I see entrepreneurs opening up a shop and doing work like this. I'm wondering about the timeframe, it's kind of in the middle of nowhere and I don't know where, how, you know, if this is just a regular recommended timeframe for, for this kind of work. I mean, if this guy works on Sundays, how is, how is that going to affect anybody? I mean, it's not like his neighbors are going to be affected.
That's correct Commissioner, the standards are in the level two home occupations and it's just a baseline for, to give the staff and the planning commission and the county board.
Okay, that makes sense then, if it's just a recommended because of where it's at, the type of thing. Otherwise, I'm looking at the picture of it and it's like, okay, how is he going to affect his next-door neighbor if he's too loud? But if it's, if it's just the baseline, what we do, I understand it, thank you.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It is approved, I'll ask for the next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the next item is PC 02-24, the applicant is Blue Earth County. The request is a review and approval of an ordinance amendment to replace chapter eight floods with a new chapter eight floodplain. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report, there was no public comment. The planning commission asked about the impact of floodplain insurance on homes that will now be in a floodplain. Staff indicated that the rate of the flood insurance is based on the risk assessment and in part dependent on the location of the structure in the respective floodplain and the elevation of the structure in relation to the elevation of the floodplain. Following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the ordinance amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. This ordinance is proposed to go into effect on February 22nd, which is the, also the date of the effective date of the floodplain maps that were approved by FEMA in August. And this ordinance amendment will replace the current floodplain ordinance, which was a 1999 ordinance and the DNR has issued a letter of conditional approval based on the ordinance that we've prepared and it's, that letter of approval indicates that our proposed amendments are consistent with the FEMA policy as well as the DNR policies. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. This time, I'll open for public comment, the portion of our hearing. If you'd like to make a comment on PC 02-24, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak on PC 02-24? I'll ask, is there anyone wishing to speak on this floodplain ordinance, PC 02-24? And I'll ask for a third and a final time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 02-24? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board and ask if there's additional comments or clarifying questions from board members.
No sir.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
It's all moved.
Okay, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, not discussion, just some comments. One, we've worked on this for quite a while, thank you to the staff for all that work. From my understanding, the state had all kinds of time to look at, but we have to have it all done within several months. So I appreciate your efforts getting that done. And now we'll meet all of the criteria from my understanding. And there was a few people out there that will end up in a floodplain, we discussed that a little bit at the planning and zoning, but from what I understand is that it shouldn't affect them too much and if they do have to have flood insurance, it's not an outrageously expensive undertaking for them, so. Just a lot of work went into this and I appreciate all the work that y'all did on it and thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the board? I cue with just that, I appreciate all the work staffed at this, especially appreciate the public open house. Was that opportunity for those that were affected, one way or the other, to come see live on the map and to have conversations with staff at, at the various levels and things like that, so I appreciate that. It's always good to get those questions answered at that open house prior to the public hearing to make sure we've got everything covered. Seeing no other questions, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, it is approved. At this time, this concludes the planning and zoning items.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you gentlemen for your time. Next item on our agenda, item number eight is the Microsoft license renewal. Curie, please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners.
Good morning Darren.
I brought Darren Hayder with us, project lead, he has been in charge of our Microsoft licensing and can answer any questions that you might have today. So what I'm bringing forward today is the three-year contract renewal through SHI, which is our Microsoft licensing and support that is used in Blue Earth County. The current three-year license and support contract with Microsoft software is used throughout the county and needs to be renewed. This includes software such as Word, Excel, Outlook, Teams, SharePoint, et cetera, and is used by the individual employees. The proposed contract will be done through the state of Minnesota contract and uses the state's contracts, discount pricing, terms and conditions. This contract will run for three years through February 28th, 2025. The count of three-year total cost is divided into three equal yearly payments. The recommended vendors we have is Microsoft and their authorized reseller SHI for the total amount of $232,218.47. This is a capital budgeted item through the IT budget, so asking for your approval on this.
Okay, you've heard the action requested, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second discussion? This is more than our bridge.
Yeah, we need this a little more though.
We would have a hard time running without this.
It's very awful, efficiencies. All right, any other discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is approved, this is approved, this item is approved.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you, if you had brought you with there and we would have had all kinds of questions. Thanks you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next we have is, is item number nine, human services. Whenever you're ready Phil, we'll ask you to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Morning, both of you. Without our TV screen, we're asking, we're not sure, we're asking everybody to identify themselves for the record and those viewing online.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you, Phil Claussen, Director of Human Services. And I'd like to also kind of reintroduce Shannon Hood to the board. Some of you know Shannon from the past, but COVID kind of took us out of hearing from our advisory committee, so I'll do my report first if that's okay with you and then turn it over to Shannon.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, it's nice to see you today and I have several action items I need to go through and a few informational items and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Shannon. First action item, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is financial assistance. And we contract with MRCI for our employment services. And these are family cash programs in order to assist eligible clients in work planning, so looking for employment. This is a mandatory program for us that we have to fulfill. And the amount of the 24 contract is $624,424 and that represents a decrease of $17,406, 2.7%. The term of this contract, January 1st of 24 through December 31st of 24. Next section is community services. This is one of our backup detox contracts with Zumbro Valley. It is a purchase of service agreement, again, it's a statutory mandate to provide detox to Blue Earth County residents or anyone detained by law enforcement in Blue Earth County. This is an overflow service, as I said, to our primary facility in New Ulm. Daily per diem increase from $438 to $460 per day. This is a 5% increase and the term of this agreement, January 1st of 24 through December 31st of 24. Community supports, partners for housing. Blue Earth County supports partners for housing in order to provide case management, support services and other admin functions to the residents of our county. They support also their staff positions through these dollars from, from Blue Earth County. It is a renewal agreement, $30,000, which is the same amount as the previous term and this term, January 1st of 24 through December 31st of 25. Couple more items, Vine, also a community support contract between ourselves and Vine for support services. Support services include things like transportation for essential appointments, shopping, employment and community activities. This is a renewal grant, the amount of the contract is $60,000, which is a 5.2% increase, which had not been increased for nine years previous. So that's one of the reasons we went to the 5%. The term, January 1st of 24 through December 31st of 25. Oops, I guess I have two more. Community-based initiative, South Central Community-Based Initiative, this is our joint powers board contracting with Blue Earth County for psychiatric services. Our mental health center provides medication management to the nine, or really 10 county area. This is a renewal, focused mostly on the medication management for individuals experiencing mental illness. We are the local mental health authority and this satisfies our mandated service requirement. The amount is an up to amount for $539,209.7 and it is based on actual service that is provided. Term, October 1st, it is backdated a bit due to some of the flow of money from DHS and it goes till September 30th, 2024. And then finally, Mr. Chair, just two appointments for the commissioners. One out of district one and the other one out of district four. So those are my action items for today.
Okay, we've heard the six action items. Let's, we could ask questions or we could have a motion and cover it under discussion. What is your wishes? We can do all six as you want, can we, Dallas?
I'll move approval of the action items.
We have approval of the six action items and a second discussion on each or any of them.
I would have just a quick, do you know how much the New Ulm detox cost us per day?
It's very similar to this Commissioner, I did look at it, I don't remember the exact dollar, but I mean, it's within certainly $30, $40.
Yeah, it was, it's in the $400 range.
Yes, right.
The, the beauty we have with New Ulm, of course, is that it's 60 miles closer.
Oh, for sure.
The Zumbro Valley is in Rochester.
Yes.
And, you know, taking law enforcement out of the area for an extra, basically driving a day to, to deliver a detox. I think it is important to notice, notice that this is a statutory mandate. This is required by the state of Minnesota that we do this. This costs the taxpayers a lot of money. But it's something we need to do, something we have to do, but, but it's, I, I just wanted to reiterate, it's, it's interesting, so this is kind of our second layer. The third layer gets much more expensive. I believe we go into the $1,000 a day.
Yes, right, we brought that.
So, it's, it's interesting how, how this is, but, yeah. Mental health issues, whether it's alcoholism or whatever, causes us a lot of issues, but we have to take care of our folks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, thank you for those comments and as you know firsthand, the transportation is the deal. And I will say that both, thank you to city cops and our sheriff's department have been very good to us about being willing to do what it takes to get this job done. But it can turn out to be a very bad problem when people are full and that feeder system, supply and demand comes from all over, so sometimes, you know, they're just full, the facilities and we keep looking, but you're right, you, you know I brought that contract for $1,000 a day, which I have mixed feelings about, we don't want to pay that, but we might not have a choice. And the alternative was to not contract with them, it was $1,400 a day, so it's a rock and a hard place, I guess.
Other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote on these six, approval of these six items? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have a few data sets to look at together and see if there's any questions. The first of those, all being in public health, two slides on tuberculosis, which was always kind of our, our chief concern prior to COVID, then COVID took center stage and, and now we're back to seeing some of the previous pattern come back around. So the latent tuberculosis, somebody that's been exposed to TB, but, but is not active, the disease is not active in their system, so they test positive on one of those manto tests in your arm, but they don't have the active disease. You'll see how it climbed up and you'll see why we struggled with tuberculosis in our community for the years prior to COVID. Then a sharp drop down and, you know, Kelly kind of tells me, public health thinks this is due to mitigation, the masking and the isolation and it cut down other diseases too, because in that way it worked. And now it's starting to climb back up, so that's of course a concern for us as people have kind of gone back to quote "normal." So that's the latent TB story. The active cases, the story here is always, which we're right back to, the numbers are not real high, but what we call contact investigation, so not only a person that's ill or has symptoms being tested, but anybody they came in contact with at work, family, so that's what public health does, try to get a net around it, figure out who maybe was exposed, who might have been exposed to tuberculosis, active tuberculosis or latent. And one of our cases, it was 500 people, so the number of hours that it takes, as you see in the graph too, when those numbers go up, it's a lot of FTEs that, that get pulled in for this purpose. And that kind of concept is present then in the final slide, which was about COVID, where Kelly, I guess provided to me anyway, I can tell you, but the, the number of hours in the different years dedicated to vaccine-specific essential services, that first 6,600 hours represents three, three staff, a little over. 2021, the 14,000 hours represents 6.8 staff, so that's a huge doubling of need. And then it comes back down in '22 and then that represents really one staff. And then this past year, it was even lower yet, like less than half of staff. So just kind of interesting to see how that plays out in staffing as well. That's what I had, Mr. Commissioner, and Mr. Chair and Commissioners, if I can hand it over to Shannon, that's okay?
Please.
Hello everyone, glad to be back again. I was just going to highlight a kind of a couple of things, when I was asked to come, I really took just a moment to kind of reflect on what, what I really have learned and also I, I value my opportunity to be on the Social Services Advisory Committee, not only to be able to help get back, but also to be able to be an active learner in that and to learn things. And one thing though that, and also just kind of think of a big picture, one thing I want to just reflect back to you that I feel that I have really truly noticed is that we're really thankful, that I am thankful that we have so many people in supervisory and leadership positions that come and also share what they are doing, that are truly knowledgeable, dedicated, hardworking and just, I mean, the amount of information that they know is outstanding. And I just want to share that I notice that in the staff that is, that is present and comes and shares with us, that I truly do, having worked in many schools, places, I feel very fortunate that we have such great staff and knowledgeable people. So with that though, I want to share some, some things that I do hear quite a bit about is, and also in the community. is, and also in the community and here, is our caseloads continue to be high. And that's going to be true for our mental health, chemical health, behavioral health caseloads, kind of across the board. When you're looking at Blue Earth County and also probably other counties too, our cases continue to become more complex. We have higher level of needs and higher level of complexities that come with different cases. So sometimes we're seeing our caseloads get higher with numbers, but not only if on paper it says, oh, we went from 40 people to 45 people. Those next five people could be an entire family for one person. The next person could be, well, they need to access this resource, this resource, this resource, this resource. So just our caseloads are becoming more complex and harder than they probably were before, which is compounded by service providers, even as Vance was just saying, like, like, oh, like, well, we're kind of, and you were saying, like, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place on certain things. I think that that's true among a lot of different areas, but we have people with more mental health needs, more, yeah, just more needs in general. Also complicated by that, just to kind of highlight, our, I would call it kind of COVID recovery, would that be a way of saying it? We had, like, for example, in the financial assistance sector, people needed a, there was a waiver or a wave on needing to come in and get, to get all your information re-updated during those times. And now all of a sudden, people needed to come in by a certain day to have that, that information complete. But people didn't understand, nope, you literally can't wait beyond your, your requirement day, because we needed to completely re-enroll you in this entire system. It's not just a click of a button to pull everything in. We have to spend a significant amount of time, and not everybody really understood that or had the resources, or they had lost their information in the mail, all those kinds of things. So I do appreciate that the staff, I really do get that the staff works very hard and works for the people. And, yeah, I appreciate that. So, kind of with that, I guess I don't have too much more to say, just, we continue to try to meet, it sounds like they continue to try to meet the needs that they can. I appreciate, we have some people in our group that ask a lot of questions, and I say that with all due respect, and every single question gets answered to, and I'm just very impressed. So, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Good to see you all.
Thank you for the updates.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time to come.
Number eight on our agenda is administration. County Administrator Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is the county board minutes for January 2nd.
I'll move the minutes.
Got a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
Move to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the bills for those three weeks.
I'll second it.
And a second, discussion. Questions on any?
Just trying to stump.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 12 in your packet, is the Human Resources Department Agenda, just to have informational items for the board's consideration today. We did have a resignation of a part-time library technician, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a clerical specialist in our sheriff's office, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And we had items G and I are resignations of two correctional officers in our jail, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill most of those positions. Item K on the list then is filling of a correctional officer, a part-time position in our jail. Then we also had an increase of hours of, of a correctional officer, actually two of those, a part-time correctional officers were increased to full-time. So we've initiated recruitment to refill those part-time positions. Item number P then is a resignation of a social worker in our children's mental health case management area, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then lastly, we had a promotion of a human service supervisor to our information technology supervisor, so that individual will be moving departments. And so that's our list for the board today. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
All right, item number 13 in your packet is a memo regarding county extension committee reappointments. We have a recommendation from our regional extension director to appoint Mary Walker from Commissioner District 3 and Cleo Matsky from Commissioner District 4 to the county extension committee.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion and a second, discussion?
These two members are very involved, so they'll be a good asset.
Yep. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Carry.
Item number 14 in your packet is a memo regarding authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds. We have had an internal work group looking at the opioid settlement funds that Blue Earth County is receiving, and that work group had proposed spending up to $50,000 this year on the implementation of a K-9 unit in the sheriff's office. And so we're needing approval from the board today if you so support for that $50,000 for the startup cost and the acquisition of the dogs as part of the K-9 unit being established.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion, carry.
Item number 15 in your packet then is our financial status report through the end of December of 2023, so the end of our fiscal year. You'll see that our total revenues ended up at $125.7 million against expenses of $110.5 million. We did have some variance this year, and I'll try and draw out some of those items. We did, at the end of the year, receive some additional CASA money for a road project that we started this fall, but it really will be completed next year. So there's about $5 million of revenue that really will be spent next year. We also had, in our budget, a $10 million expenditure for the Public Works Building. As the board is aware, we're still struggling a little bit with getting the permits necessary to begin that project, although we are moving forward now. So we hope that we'll see more activity in 2024. But we have less expenditures this year than we expected because of that. Back on the revenue side of things, our investment return was much greater than we anticipated because of some of the recovery in the market, and so we had some additional revenue there that was unexpected. And so the net result is we had some variance in our overall revenue and expense lines resulting in pretty favorable bottom, bottom line at this point. So be happy to answer any questions on kind of the core county budget if you have any. Otherwise, I'll continue on on the ponderosa, but maybe thought I would stop here today and just ask if there are any specific questions.
Yep, that's good.
All right, not seen any, the ponderosa then had just under $5 million of revenue against $4.4 million of expense. And so once again, you put a little money into reserves with the landfill that will help us in future years with the large equipment and cell construction there. The second page then has our cash and investment balances. You'll see at the end of December, we had total available funds of $77.6 million against that six-month operating needs target of $58.6 million. Our total county funds then at the end of the year were $141.4 million. Again, I'd be willing to answer any questions the board might have on any of the items in the financial status report.
Questions or comments on any of the financials?
Nope, very informative. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Next on our agenda is the commissioners' reports on committees. Commissioner People, would you like to start us off today?
Okay, so we had a work session, at least on Tuesday, the January 9th, and then Wednesday, the 10th, January 10th, did have MICA Annual Board Meeting. Actually, I was here, a bunch of people up there at the meeting, and went over the happenings in the legislature and all. Thursday, January 11th, Mayor and Clerks in Lake Crystal, that was, we had the guy that talked about succession planning, succession, that was pretty good. And then Friday, the January 12th, did have the MSSA, the Social Services Breakfast. That was at Marriott, and that had a number of people there, some of the commissioners here, and had the legislators from the area. Geez, that went for several hours, quite a bit, had a lot of discussions, so it was pretty good. And then on January 16th, had our legislative work session, and later the judicial ditch for 48, and a bid award, and that does conclude my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, I had planning and zoning that Wednesday evening, which you've already seen, that information went fairly well. And then we had our county board work session, had several things we discussed. And then I had our legislative work session, which I thought went very well. Josh and everyone that worked hard putting that together, I thought that was very informative. Mr. Chair did a great job keeping everybody on task. Was just a nice conversation with all the representatives that we were able to get there. And we had judicial ditch 48 bid award, got that done. And yesterday I had my MVAC meeting. Every other month we meet as a full board, everything's going really well there. We got another accountant, because our old accountant retired, we hired one, and they got stolen away right away, but now we have another one, and he seems to be doing a really good job. And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart.
All right, well, our last meeting was January 2nd, where we placed you into chairmanship there, Chair Pap. So we, we are certainly proud to have such, honored to have a leadership such as yourself. The next day, on the 3rd, we had a department head meeting. On the 4th of January, I had a NACO Transportation Committee meeting on Zoom. On Monday, the 8th, I had a detox meeting up in New Ulm. We had our work session on the 9th. On the 10th, I had a Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting at the Justice Center, and then I went right from there to a Blue Earth Nicola County Safe Roads meeting at Minnesota DOT. On the 11th, myself and Chair Pap met with a group of people at the Justice Center to meet with the governor and talk about possible new BCA building to be built right next to the Justice Center. Very important necessity. I know from my background in law enforcement that this is a necessity, and it, and it would really help southern Minnesota not have to drive all the way to the cities with, with evidence and issues. On the 12th, I had a Minnesota Social Services Association, MSSA Legislative Breakfast. And, let's see, on the 16th, we had a legislative work session here at the courthouse. Really nice to have the legislators here and a nice talk. On the 18th, I actually drove up to Brainerd. On my way up to Brainerd, I did my NACO Rural Action Caucus, and I went up to Brainerd to give a talk at the Minnesota County Engineers Association.
How'd that talk go?
Well, the talk went really well. It was actually a ruse. I found out that I was given an award for the outstanding contribution to better Minnesota transportation by the Engineers Association, County Engineers Association. Absolutely shocked me. I, I still have payback to some of our staff that were involved with this, but I'm very honored to be able to, to be given that. I was informed that I was the only county commissioner ever to receive an award through their association.
Wow, good for you.
So, so that made me feel kind of good. Let's see, on, on the 19th, yeah, that was up, held up at Craigins. So I left early in the, on the morning from Craigins and drove to St. Paul for the AMC Board of Directors meeting on the 19th. Yesterday, I think all yes thing I did yesterday is found out I had a leak in my kitchen from some roof problems, which I have a roofer coming over this afternoon. So that's about the end of my.
Thank you, and congratulations on your honor.
Thank you.
For myself, since the January 2nd meeting, the January 3rd department heads has been mentioned. I also participated in a NACO EMS work group meeting that day. On the 8th of January, the NACO Ag Policy Chair and Vice Chairs had a call, the January 9th work session I attended as well. On the 10th, the members of the Drainage Work Group, specifically tied in as, as county commissioners and with AMC, had a call primarily to discuss the meeting, drainage work meeting, work group meeting we had on the 11th. Also on the 11th, as has been mentioned, had the opportunity to, to host the governor at our, at our Justice Center and give him a, the look of that and talk about that important project. Mayor and Clerk that night was also been mentioned. The 16th, I too was at the legislative work session in the JD 48 ditch meeting. On the 17th, we had our, now will be quarterly instead of monthly, but I think we're going to try to go to quarterly policy meetings for the sewer, one watershed, one plan group. On the 18th, the NACO Rural Action Caucus meeting I participated on. On the 19th, we had two landowner meetings, CD 47 and CD 78. And I'll continue to thank and congratulate our drainage staff for having those landowner meetings to get, to get the folks there, to get the questions answered before we get to the stage like we were today with the final hearing, just to make sure we've got everything covered beforehand. So appreciate those landowner meetings. Yesterday, the Rural Minnesota Energy Board met in Slaton, participated in that, as well as the NACO Ag Policy Monthly Call. That concludes my report. This time I entertain a motion to recess.
So vote.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are recessed.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Good job.